Parsonsville Planning Board Workshop Meeting for December the first at 6:00 PM. And we're calling it to order at this time, since we do have a forum, it should be all set, and we'll move forward on the agenda. This is, remember, this is a workshop, and it's really to go over whatever we can we feel like we need to go over to help us get through, learn things in our, and to process all the applications that's come forward to us. And one of them, that's been brought to us, we brought it to the workshop, so we can try to work through it. And this is the application, hopefully everybody's got a copy of it, for Mark Bolton, from Cornish, Maine. The owner's name is Gaely Silper, and this person lives in Newbury, Newbury, Mass. But this is for their property at 55 Road Between the Ponds in Shoreland District.
Mr. Chairman, can I please just?
Yeah.
Are we supposed to be reviewing this really during the workshop?
Yeah, it's just workshop for us just to go through here, and just get our opinions, see if we got any real questions that we want to send back through before we ever bring it up, it ever gets to our board meeting, official board meeting.
Right.
We're just trying to help us, you know, process the information that we're getting, instead of knowing where he's sitting at the board, on our board meeting night, sometimes they're sitting there for half an hour, forty minutes, looking, looking through stuff.
No, I know.
It's just, it's just trying to help us a little bit, that's all it's doing. And because I see some things on the front page, it's got issues, and I don't know if you guys picked up on it or not.
These calculations are correct based on this?
Huh?
This sketch plan, the well and the septic are too close together.
I don't know about that, but I, the well, yeah, I can see how close it is there, but that's grandfathered, because that's existing, they're not adding, they're not changing, where they want, they want to move the septic, they want to move it, and you'll see it on one of your other drawings.
The septic's already in place.
It's already in place, everything that's in place in that first drawing you got, Gerard.
Because it's amazing that the septic seems like it's only around twenty-eight feet away from the well.
It is.
That's, that's legal.
Yeah.
That's scary, that that happened on the lake.
Also, I've printed some stuff off, I didn't print off a bunch of copies. I can't because the planning board room is open, but this is out of chapter 1000 in this shoreline zone, expansions of non-conforming structures.
Yeah, but I, I was looking in our book too, expansion of non-conforming structures.
Right, it's word for word in our book.
Yeah. So, there's a, I see, what I see, on the very front of it, if you look down there, they don't even tell us which zone it's in, on the front page, it's not even marked as shoreland, and what's the backup for the rest of it, you know, the closest of, when you go to that table, the shoreland, it refers to some other district that's closest to it, that's not on here either.
There's no real sketch plan?
No, not, it's not, it's just a drawing, is what it is.
Yeah, the sketch plan's supposed to show all of others.
Yeah.
And it's really, this is, this seems crazy to disprove.
Yeah, and I don't know why we needed a copy of the building permit, there's a building permit in here too.
Application.
Huh?
It was his application.
Just part of the application, well, and then whenever they...
So is this a camp they want to turn into a private residence, or is this?
No, it's a residence now.
It's already a residence?
It's already a residence.
So what is the, what do they want to expand?
Now, if you read that, they don't, yeah, they kind of want to expand, what they want to do is...
What it is, is, can I interrupt for a minute?
Yeah.
They have a failing foundation, the foundation is caving in.
Right.
And it's a block, whole block foundation that's giving way, and the building will fall at some point, so they want to remove the building, put a real foundation under it, and rebuild.
So they want to do a...
Thirty percent expansion.
They want a complete demolition in reality.
In reality, yeah.
It's a, it's a demolition and a rebuild, is what it is, Gerard.
With the thirty percent expansion?
With a thirty-foot extension.
Thirty-foot, uh, expansion?
Thirty percent, no.
Right, thirty percent.
Thirty percent.
Right.
And I don't think they can do it, I still don't, not even by looking at this.
So there's some impervious area questions, which I can figure out all the square footage for the buildings that are on the property, but I actually have to go out and measure the driveway.
Driveway, right.
And I can get all them figures.
Right.
For impervious, impervious area.
See, that's what I, I was looking at, Gerard, if you go to your book, your ordinance book, and you go to page forty-seven, forty-seven? No, I'm sorry, go to page fifty-five, fifty-five, paragraph F.
Okay.
Paragraph F. And that's what, when I read this, you read paragraph F, so this is why we need a workshop, is go through things like this, before we ever have our meeting to discuss an application.
No, it's true, because I have, I have all this survey, I have section of survey here.
But that's what's got me concerned about this property, is a total, uh, total impervious area.
Area of all structures.
Is greater probably than the thirty percent, than, than the lot.
Twenty percent.
Huh?
Twenty percent.
It's only twenty percent here.
Right, so they can't do this.
I don't think they can either.
No, they can't.
But we got to wait on him to give us our, go get the square footages and let us know.
That was a huge issue when this whole thing got changed with D E P.
Yeah, right, if you read that, there he says, "The total footprint areas of all structures, all structures."
Right, combined.
All combined.
Combined.
"Including parking lots and other non-vegetated services within the Shoreland District shall not exceed twenty percent of the lot, or a portion thereof located within Shoreland District." And that includes the driveway.
I know, this, this is something that includes decks and everything.
Yeah, decks, driveways, everything.
Yep, anything impervious.
So...
Right, I was gonna say, and they call out large rocks on the drawing, so...
There's some large rocks, but that's part of the, the property, yeah, so I think they got a problem, when Jesse goes out and measures all this, he's going to come back to us and let us know that we're going to find a problem of even approving this application that's submitted now because of impervious, impervious. They cannot enlarge at all, none.
No, and that's, that's especially the reason we have the twenty percent rule, is because shoreland.
Yeah, because it's when it's listed, if you go back to the...
It's in our most vulnerable, it's in our most vulnerable district.
Yes, absolutely, if you go back over here to page, it says here on page forty-seven, that "The maximum total footprint for the principal structure may not be expanded to a size greater than eight hundred square feet, or thirty percent larger than the footprint that exists on January the first, nineteen eighty-nine." Well...
That's in the, inside this footprint area.
Inside the footprint.
Okay.
But how can they enlarge it all, when you go back over here, and then you go to F, they won't, they won't allow that to happen.
Right.
F, F over, F and, F and A.
Yeah, yeah, the structure's located less than seventy-five feet.
Right, it's less than seventy-five feet.
Yeah, yep.
Yeah.
Structures expanded so it's greater than a thousand square feet.
Good, that's great. Yeah, it says here, "If the structure is less than seventy-five foot from the normal high water line of water, water by the Triptree Stream, blah, blah, whatever, it's greater than a thousand square feet, or thirty percent larger than the footprint existed in nineteen eighty-nine." And they are, they're on eleven foot from the, they're on eleven foot from the high water line.
Wow.
They're way inside the seventy-five.
Look at that well, that well is so close to this, I think it's scary.
Yeah.
I wouldn't want to...
Yeah, so I, I'm going to ask the CEO, if you guys want to go along with this, since this is workshop, where we're gathering information, is what we're doing, to go out and measure all of the impervious, because what they're telling us here, if you go back to that first page, on the application, the very front page, it says they've only got twenty thousand one hundred square feet, that lot is.
Right, I think that measurement's off.
I'm just telling you what they got written down here.
I saw that on there, and it's on the survey that he's submitting to.
So it's only, that's even twenty, that's not even a fourth of what a lot size is supposed to be out there, which make, our conforming law's point nine-two.
Yep.
Point nine-two acres, geez, twenty thousand square feet is not even a, that's not even a, a fifth. So there's just no way that they can do anything at all, that's going to increase the size of any structure now then. Can we stop them from, when I read the book, if they stay within the footprint, Jesse, let's see if I'm saying this right.
Their existing footprint.
If they stay into existing footprint, and not try to increase anything at all, then I think that they could probably do that, but they cannot increase anything.
No.
Because impervious, impervious, you guys, what do you guys think?
I agree.
So is the increase, there's a reason, did you have it written down what his square footage was for the increase?
There's a reason it's in the woods.
Nine eighty-nine.
That's, that's because, there's a reason it's in the woods.
Yeah.
That's because we take all the buildings into consideration.
Right, all the buildings, everything. All the buildings and the driveway.
Well, not for square footage, for increasing the structure.
Well, that's not, what, if you read page fifty-five, it includes that, I disagree with you there.
Well, impervious, impervious.
That's what I'm going to, is impervious.
Is the twenty percent.
Yeah.
But the thirty percent increase is on a structure.
Well, how can he do anything then, if he's exceeding his impertial well, okay?
Especially in shoreland.
Yeah, he can't.
So if he's under his impervious area, and he wants to add thirty percent, and it still keeps him under the twenty percent impervious by adding his thirty percent increase, which is the maximum amount allowed.
I understand that.
Then it would be allowed, if he goes over his twenty percent impervious area, and increases upon non-conformity of impervious versus pervious, then we wouldn't be able to allow it.
Right, and that's what I'm saying already, from what I see.
Because we'd be increasing upon non-conformity.
Right, right, yeah, that's what I'm saying.
Yep.
We just, we just stayed a little bit there.
I gotta, I gotta go out and measure the driveway, and get all the impervious area measurements, before we can actually make that determination.
Right.
Well, just by the size of this lot, that like you're saying, it's twenty thousand square feet.
The thirty percent increase is done by all the structures, I figure out the square footage even on the decks.
Yeah.
Right, the amount of structures they have there between the garage and the house, they don't have much room to play with.
They don't.
They got a shed, they got a garage.
They got a driveway.
They got a house.
Yeah, they got stairs, they got a deck.
I don't know if they'll be as close as you think they are.
Huh?
Because I don't know that they'll be as close as you think they are.
They're eleven feet from the water.
Yeah.
But that's, must, must leave altogether his square footage.
Yeah.
With his shed, the house, and the garage, is one thousand ninety-eight square feet.
Current.
Current.
Yeah.
So his new proposed house is what, nine hundred and something square feet?
Nine hundred and ninety-eight.
Mm-hmm.
It's about thirteen fifty. And the driveway is...
It's a pretty good size.
Sixty feet by twenty-five feet, plus a little extra.
That would give you one thousand one hundred and fifteen square feet.
Based off his drawing, so it'd be about a thousand, so nine ninety-eight for the house, you know, ten foot two by seven foot two for the shed, so that's what, seventy, seventy plus.
Yeah.
Twenty foot by fourteen foot, for the garage is two hundred and eighty plus.
Mm-hmm.
So that's thirteen, you know, fourteen hundred to be conservative.
Right.
We have to remember that these calculations are correct.
Right.
The garage is two hundred and eighty-five point six nine square feet.
Right. And then that leaves him twenty-six hundred square feet to do the, to do the, for the driveway?
I don't know.
You know.
What's twenty percent of twenty...
Four thousand twenty.
Four thousand twenty?
Yeah, if, if, if that's right. Yeah, twenty thousand.
Increase two hundred and twenty square feet.
Twenty-five percent would have been what, twenty?
Point nine.
Twenty-five percent?
Yeah, I'm just trying, sometimes I do it.
Like five thousand?
Five thousand, I do it in increments of quarters, halves.
Yeah.
Yeah. So I don't know.
Actually, he's still going to be under his thirty percent on the increase.
But that's just on the house.
That's just on the house, now you've got to figure out if it's impervious or pervious.
Impervious, pervious, that's what's got, that's the answer.
Okay, so let's treat this just for a minute, that he's not going to meet his impervious area, so the application will be dead on the table.
Dead on the table, right, right.
But then he can, he can still build to exact replica.
Yes.
Because of the failing foundation.
Right, I understand that, yeah.
It's inevitable.
Yeah, as long as he stays in the exact same footprint.
We have another interesting thing, that we had the same issue with Weeks Road, says right here, "The lot is small, located on West Pond, a variance is requested."
We, we don't do variances.
Right here.
Yeah, we still don't, we don't do variances though.
Well, that's, here's my point.
That's the variance request for the septic system, if you look at the front page of that.
Yeah.
It'll, it'll tell you right where it needs to go for that variance, and it would have to be local plumbing inspector approval, because the table...
They don't D H S as well, with D H S.
Yep, it would be all done on the table eight A.
Where's that in that?
See, that's why I saw the well that close to the septic system.
That's in the back.
That's what I said to myself.
They're, they're not submitting this for a variance to the planning board, this gets submitted to me for a variance.
This is just information for us?
Right.
The lot is...
But it doesn't matter, the planning board is reviewing this, and if they're requesting a variance...
They're not requesting the variance from you.
Right.
This is just the new...
No, I understand that, but I'm, what I'm saying, what I'm trying to say is, Jesse, is that the planning board has to take this into account, the fact that they're requesting a variance based on the fact that their well is so close to their septic.
All right, so this is a different kind of variance for a septic system.
Mm-hmm.
Sometimes it will say that it would be local plumbing inspector approval and state approval.
Right, right.
This one just is listed as local plumbing, because it's under table eight A, so what the, what the designer has said is that when I look up table eight A before I approve this, I can check his measurements and make sure that under table eight A, I can approve it down to fifty feet, where it's supposed to be a hundred. Or the treatment tank, well, fifty feet down to forty-five feet.
It's not even thirty, it's around thirty something feet.
Forty-five feet to the well.
Forty-five feet to the well, he's, he's got a drawing.
They're moving, they're moving.
There's another drawing.
Oh, they're moving this?
Yeah, they're moving.
Yeah, because the septic right now is like right, right by the door.
Right, they're moving the septic over forty-five feet from the wellhead.
Yeah.
See, there's not enough detailed plans here showing any...
This one, it's here.
This one.
That one shows, you see, it's back in the disposal system applications where it's at, Gerard.
Yeah.
It's on back, there you go.
Yeah, so...
And he's using the same...
Existing, so they're going to use the existing field.
Yeah, they're going to use the existing field.
Existing tank, pump.
They're going to have...
Proposed tank, the tank's going to be over here, but it's still closer to the well, the proposed tank and everything is still closer to the well.
Well, it's further than it is currently, currently it's like forty feet, less than forty feet.
Oh, yeah, it's like forty something.
So, yeah, so it's, it's forty-five feet, so that's why they're requesting the variance because...
Table eight A, if you guys want to do.
No, you're good, we don't need to.
I'm sure the number's right there.
I don't think we need to.
They jive, yeah.
I don't think we need to.
I've already looked them up.
But see, he's already got a well now, existing, it's already been approved with the old tanks where it's at, Gerard, but he wants to move it forward.
It's actually under fifty feet.
Yeah.
Jesse was mentioning fifty, the, from the well to the, the tank is forty-five feet.
Right, right.
And that's the variance that they requested from Jesse.
Yeah.
And they don't, and they don't have enough room, they don't have enough lot to get a hundred feet away.
There's no way.
They don't, they'd be on the other side of the road.
Yeah, yeah, but they're making improvement from what they have existing now.
Oh, I'm kidding, look at where it is.
Yeah, it's on top of it.
Look at where it is.
Yeah.
One of the things that even the people, when they, unfortunately, we messed with our Shoreland ordinance back in two thousand eighteen.
Right.
And the people had really good intentions, they were hoping that as a result of it, people would commit and put in new systems, because Long Pond is dead.
Oh, yeah.
You know, so whenever a little shoreline we have left, we gotta...
Okay.
Take care of it.
Actually, we looked from Long Pond, tested for whether they're sure that a lot of these houses, houses, they really...
Did you hear what Jesse just said about Long Pond water test?
What's that?
Jesse just told us that Long Pond's water test this year is better than it has been in the last twelve years.
Well, that's great, it's probably on the way in, trying to...
It's because people are starting to smarten up and replace their systems.
Yeah, so that's good, we know that too, but this application for variance for this disposal, is this, I don't know why we got it, because it's this information for us in reality.
It's impressional.
Because really, we don't even act on this.
Nope.
This is acted upon by the CEO.
Right.
Or the state clerk, or a combination of the both.
Right.
It's not, nothing to do with us.
No, I know, but it was interesting that...
Yeah, well, it just helps us know that they do their due diligence.
Looking at it and seeing the incident in Weeks Road, the minute I looked at the distance, I said, "This is very similar to the issue where they needed a variance on Weeks Road," and then I saw the variance, so it just kind of...
Oh, yeah, but the, the local plumbing inspector, who is the CEO, is the one that does that, not us.
No, I know that.
Okay.
I know that as far as, that's that, the variance they were seeking was for, from the appeals board.
Right.
The last...
That other one, yes, Pouches, yeah.
But what I'm not crazy about is this packet, these drawings.
Yeah.
They're really, you know...
I'm not, I'm not crazy about a meter, you have to study each one of them, Gerard.
This looks like a kid's show.
Yeah.
Well, that's, I think, I think it's that they gave us too much, because really, the only one that we care about is this one.
Well, we don't have to care about that one, that's the drawing.
Yeah, but it's good that they put these others, because knowing about the other, it's good that they were honest, and they thought the garage, know about this whole space.
Yeah, but I think the other...
Well, we do know that they can't expand by thirty.
No, I don't like what they're saying. Because impervious, impervious, he's got, I'm pretty sure.
But I don't know how big their driveway is.
Now, it looks, it looks bigger than the house, I'll tell you that, the way it's drawn up, see this?
The house is only seven hundred square feet.
Yeah, look at this, versus that. So this here's almost double the size of that, by the drawing.
Right.
And then the road frontage, how much frontage do they have here, Jesse?
Hundred and fifty.
Two road frontage or?
I mean, yeah, frontage, property frontage.
On the water?
No, on the road.
On the road? It ended up, I got it right now.
One thirteen twenty-five and sixty's what they got.
It was two hundred and ten feet of road frontage?
Huh?
Two hundred and ten feet of road frontage according to the survey.
Not by this.
Oh, let's look at the survey.
One thirteen twenty-five and sixty.
One ninety-eight there.
I got two oh, two ten point three eight.
On the, on the actual map?
Yeah. Adding this to this.
Mm-hmm.
So this, this measurement came from that pin to that pin. This measurement came to that pin, along that pin.
So their property goes from here to here?
Yes.
What is this doing, running through here like this?
So this is a right-of-way.
Right-of-way, okay.
Yep, that's her right-of-way, so the neighbor over here.
Yeah.
Has ten feet.
Right.
That she uses for, that her father let them have ten feet, for a right-of-passage. They gave an adjacent landowner over here twenty feet to build the access to the pond.
But it's still their property, it's just a right-of-way.
Still her property, it's just a right-of-way.
So what he's got this added up here, and I see it on actual drawing.
Yeah.
Is two hundred and ten point three eight feet.
So he, he missed his mark.
Yeah, he did.
Because there's a pin here.
Right.
But it's the pin that's further back.
Right, so there must have been another pin over here someplace too, on this side.
Yeah.
There should have been two pins over here.
Right, I trust the survey, please, and I'm working this hand drawing.
Yeah, over hand drawing, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's this one here, guys, we got it in our package.
Yeah.
And it adds up to over two hundred.
So that, that's why I, I had a hard time seeing the impervious area, because his, his measurements weren't jiving with the twenty thousand square feet.
Right.
This one on the survey did.
That, that jives with the twenty thousand?
Yeah.
Okay.
I'm gonna, I'm gonna double-check it all.
Good.
And get straight measurements when I get down there.
Okay, well, that's what we, that's why we're doing this.
Yep.
That's why we have this workshop, to go through this, this package.
I think it's beneficial.
Oh, yeah, it helps all of us, and then to show you this too, it helps us to look at this, when they submitted this, this page here, you guys, I'll just show you, about all the butters, when this, this package, all it shows is what's in the book, the lot, the butter's name, and what the address is, it doesn't show where the butter actually is, and if it's one or two, if it's man, if it's husband and wife, it only shows them with one name, so guess who else do all the other work, and do all this review and look it all up? She does, that's not her job.
No, I mean, well, actually, they, they, they don't have access to the equipment that we have either.
Right, but I'm just saying, it's not really Desiree's job, yes, Desiree?
The command of focus online, they do.
So, Desiree, so, yeah, she's already got her ducks lined up. That's what I have, that's what I'm talking to them about, look what she had to do to that, look what Desiree had to do to get the right information.
I know, and it changes, and also, it's not updated, so some people are going to get the list that moved, or sold their house, and people that are there, they don't know.
I, I go as a people first, so if you bought, bought or sold property after you first.
They all said.
If it's forwarded, great, but yeah, whatever's in the.
Well, you know, a house is totally overturned and so fast.
Oh, yeah.
There's so many new owners, it's not even funny.
Right. But I just wanted to.
But it's interesting. I noticed he says here, new construction of residents at Bravo on existing footprint.
What's that?
On existing footprint. How can he enlarge it if it's gonna be on the existing footprint?
I don't know how you're gonna do that.
That's a contradiction, a contradiction.
Yeah, it is.
How far away do you have to go for a budget? How far away do you have to go for?
And the butter? Any one of the butts that, any portion of that property, any of them.
Actually, I think it's, yeah.
It's like 500 feet, I think it is too.
Yeah, cause he's like 10 properties down the road. I get that they're all postage stamps.
Yeah, but they're all really small.
When you got quarter acre lots.
Yeah, you got about less than a quarter acre lot. Huh? That's the exacting house.
Yeah.
But I thought that was interesting.
Yeah, it is.
His, his new construction, but it says on existing footprint.
Well, they say it right on the lake.
Jesus, how can you put something bigger on an existing footprint?
Yeah.
You can't.
Is it bigger? It is bigger? Cause I didn't, I didn't see anywhere with the current house. What's the square footage on that?
It's according to the tax card, without being able to read the little print on the deck, 696 and 117.
Okay, so yeah. Is 696?
So 813 square feet. And it looks like a four by six maybe deck?
Something like that.
No, it's got a, it's 120 square foot deck.
Oh, we can't see that out front then. You can't see the front.
Yeah, it's all front. It's 120 square foot deck.
Yeah.
And the 696 includes that?
No.
No.
So 813 plus 120 square foot deck.
Plus the steps in the back, what size are those? That looks like that's probably about a four by, what's that, about a four by six or four by eight?
I'll post it in the garage and the shed, so yeah.
What's the square footage of their new house?
998?
998.
So it's well under the 30%?
Yeah.
933 square feet.
But if it's in conflict with the purgus, impurgus, you still think? That's where my dilemma is still. I'm back at that point.
Right.
Purgus versus impurgus.
So it boils down to as if he, he falls inside his impervious area, he's gonna be fine. If he falls outside of that impervious area, he's not gonna be fine.
He can't do nothing. They'd have to, this package would probably not, if it came before, that it's put together now, and he's outside his impervious limit.
So at this point, it's critical for me to get down there and measure the driveways and all the.
All the structures.
Structures.
Structures, the decks, the steps, everything.
Yeah.
And all that. And you have to add it all up and see where he's at impurgus.
And I say go by that survey, cause it says it's 20,100 square feet.
That's what he says over here too.
Right. So that's what we'll base our numbers on, impervious, impervious area.
That's what we have to. We have to go by that.
Yeah. So as long as everything adds up to less than 4,020.
Right.
If it's over that, then.
The package is.
We gotta, we gotta, we gotta get, they gotta stay within their current footprint.
Yeah.
Okay.
Also a site walk would tell it.
Do what?
A site walk could tell us a lot.
Yeah. Yeah, this is one that we'll probably, I think we want a site walk on this one. Oh, it's so close.
And with that number of the butters?
With that number of butters.
The people, you know, the people on the lakes, they're very.
Well, the last one we had, nobody showed up. A butter's hidden.
That was just for debt.
Yeah. But I'm just saying, that one.
The West Pond, that whole association of people over there aren't bad. They're, they're really not.
No, they're good people. Their intention when.
They, they wanna, was saved upon by, a lot of the neighbors turning their neighbors in for bad lease deals.
Good, good.
No, when they were here, when they were here, they, we were changing the laws, fortunately regulating a little bit. But when they, when they were here, they were well intentioned. They were hoping that basically the law was going to encourage people to put in new systems, that had new systems. So the people that are on the ponds, they're very passionate about.
Right.
Biggest thing with this, with this particular house is the foundation has such a curvature to it.
I understand that.
That it's, it's been years of the heavy soils pushing against it. And it actually, it pushes towards the pond.
Wow. So it's pushing it to the, to the water?
To the water.
Wow.
So they, really, they, it's not like they can jack it out. It's only a crawl space.
You guys think we also should ask for a detailed, actual drawing? I, I think we need one 11 by 17. Other than these hand, hand drawn, guesstimated distances and all that. Don't you think we need an actual drawing?
I don't think he guessed on them. I think he actually went out there.
I'm just telling you what I'm, what I think. That's my opinion.
Yeah, yeah.
But it's still, I need to hear one of the rest of the board.
I would hear.
You think you'd like to have one? What about you, Aaron?
I mean, it's, it says drawn to scale. It says right here.
Drawn to scale.
Really wasn't, it was, he did give dimensions. I give him that. But it, it wasn't really drawn to scale. I mean, it showed how long the road supposedly is. It didn't show how wide.
Didn't show the distances between the driveways and it calls that out in there.
Exactly.
In our form, it asked for distances for driveway to driveway.
This isn't just a house. This isn't just a house like.
But it still called it out to do that.
Right.
It did. Anybody got any other questions about this package we're trying to work our way through and see if we got questions before we go to, when we have our actual meeting near the middle of the month?
See, it even says variance in distance of all property lines to develop source of information. Locating, location of all sewers, cul pits. Location of names and present widths of existing streets.
There's only one street out there. I know that.
Right, right.
But it should be drawn to scale on the drawing. Yeah.
Location of dimensions of existing driveway, streets, parking and riding areas. Walkways on the site.
Right. H, H needs to be more detailed.
Discussing.
G and H. Yeah, G and H.
Exactly what we were discussing.
Yeah.
About having those, those.
Those dimensions.
Those dimensions that we can't see.
Yeah. And then they'll have to, they gotta have one original fully executed and signed application plus nine copies. And then 10 copies of a site plan drawn at a scale. It's gotta be scaled. That's what we keep forgetting about to allow a review of list of approval criteria and show the following when applicable. It says drawn to scale. And we don't have that.
And then also location of intersecting roads, driveways.
Driveways.
200 feet of site.
You understand how many?
He's got it put in 200 feet of site. It's gotta be a driveway on each side of the site.
Right.
So there's another thing.
But if they draw it to scale.
Location of open drainage courses, wetlands, standing trees, other important natural features.
Right.
All those things aren't on the plan.
Right.
Because we don't know if he's gonna cut here, put trees in.
But if you look at this drawing that Jesse's got, where's that?
Somewhere at some.
That drawing you just showed.
That survey?
You know where.
No, no, the drawing of the house. The house drawing. I'll show them. There's nothing, they don't show any vegetation on his property at all.
I don't know which drawing you're talking about.
About the house that you showed. Actual picture of the house, the picture. This here. See, there's hardly nothing on his property as far as vegetation. If you look at that.
After I assume the well and everything else, I'm not surprised.
Yeah, there's hardly nothing on that. There's just a house and, and just grass.
That thing is in the lake.
Yeah, that's what I said.
Oh, my God.
It's only 11 feet. See, there's no vegetation, but grass.
Yeah, also, listen, it says, right here, it says, location of all buildings, setbacks, yards, buffers required by this or other town or ordinances. Location of dimensions, ground floor, location dimensions of proposed driveways, parking. We know he's not doing it in driveway.
We want them to give us more. A scale, detailed drawing.
Direction and route of proposed surface.
Scale, detailed drawing. Showing the, the roads, the driveways, the setbacks, all that. They need to do it all. Especially item G and H down here.
Which requires down to Jesse?
All buildings. There you go, driveway.
Yeah, again, go down to G and H on the site plan content. Item number G, item number H. And then on the back here.
G and H.
G and H.
And also proposed lands.
K.
This is where the buffering comes in.
And then just another thing that we'll need on the drawing is just which way they're expanding.
Yeah.
If they're going. Increasing by a couple hundred square feet.
If they're, which way are they gonna do that?
Location and type of exterior water.
I know that. They need to give a broken, leave a broken line. It says, I'm going to here.
Yeah, yeah.
And we need that on the drawing.
Existing to new.
To new.
Right.
Or proposed.
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 Well, also like we dealt with, with the pack though. Location and type of existing lighting.
He puts it on there.
That's in there. It says something for security.
It's in here. It's in his package.
I was going down. I was coming to the meeting here.
Somebody to elaborate and give you.
Somebody has a house on GH and K.
GH and K. And also.
It looks like a military compound.
Yeah. All exterior lighting will be residential for security grade. Landscaping will be as existing.
Yeah.
All surface water is directed towards the heavy standing trees and on the eastern boundary.
They need to show that.
All water supply will be.
Standing tree, but we don't see any.
We don't see any trees.
It's on the eastern boundary.
Yeah. Okay. So this package here is not gonna be, it wouldn't be helpful for, if we hadn't have done this in the workshop tonight, and we had a group here, and we had the people here, that's application and everything else, and maybe some of the butters that are listening. And we went through all this just like we just now, there's no way we could act on this application.
No.
We'd have to throw it out.
But I wonder about the, I just am concerned. I'd have to look into the MMA book to see if we're allowed to kind of do this. I don't know if we're allowed to, to workshop meetings before we actually have the meeting.
I don't see why we can't. You can have workshop for just about anything.
No, I know, but prior to the initial application.
Do you wanna educate us on that, Desiree?
You know, that would be in the MMA manual, I'm pretty sure.
Yeah, Desiree, can you?
I have at home. I just.
Can you send a question to MMA Legal?
We can look in the manual.
Yeah, well, I just said, I wanna hear from MMA Legal. Can we review proposed applications in a workshop?
Agreed.
Before. Okay. She's gonna get the book.
Is that something I?
Yeah.
Cause that book, that book is very helpful.
Yeah.
The MMA has certain state standards that we're governed by.
Right.
Even though it might not be in our ordinances, we have certain procedures that they want us to follow.
Right. But I just didn't want to.
But no, I know. I, I understand your point. I really do. But I, I wonder if we needed to workshop it after we've kind of seen the app, prior to the applicant. Because this issue's a due process with, like, we had this as a supposed discussion of ordinances. And then the butters don't know that we're talking about this.
Right.
So they could perceive this as a due process issue.
Or due process or freedom of information?
Well, no, due process that they weren't told that we were discussing about this project.
Right.
You know what I mean? That's my concern, is that we posted it as a workshop. And then we're workshop, but we didn't say we were workshopping this particular item.
We did in the last meeting.
What's that?
In the last meeting, we did say we were gonna be workshopping.
Oh, oh.
We did say that in our last meeting.
I didn't realize. The interesting thing is, is that if we, it probably would have been appropriate if we probably sent that out to the butters. I, anyway, I think that's.
But we did bring it up. We was gonna workshop this. It was asked for by the CEO.
No, I remember now.
Yeah.
You mentioned it.
Yeah. You find anything, Desiree? Kind of.
Kind of.
That's the problem with all these books, it's kind of.
As long as the applicant has received reasonable notice of the meeting, which we did, at which his or her application will be discussed, it is not legally required that the applicant or an authorized representative of the applicant be present. Not required.
Not the applicant.
Applicant or a representative?
No, not. That's the applicant side. I'm talking about the butters now.
Oh.
The due process rights of the people that apply the property.
Well, they'd have the same due process rights as.
They would have the same process rights, I would think.
They wouldn't have more rights to be applicant.
No, because this, the applicant knows that, nobody knows this meeting's going on. This purpose hasn't been advertised. Everybody that wants.
It's been posted. The agenda was posted.
It was posted.
Oh, it was posted on the website that we were gonna discuss.
The agenda was posted.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, you have an agenda there on the table.
Okay, great. Great. So it was on the website.
Yeah.
Yeah.
It was, this was there.
Okay. But I'm just, I just wonder if the butters needed to be contacted, that's all.
Well, according to the ordinances, the butters are notified when the application is received. And they're notified about the next meeting. So they're, when the application, I mean, this is a different circumstance. But usually I would have received the application on Monday. It's kind of hard to get a butters notice in the mail for two days later for Wednesday. So butters notices are going in the mail for the business meeting on December 15.
So the butters still don't know yet?
They're, they're going in the mail and.
Other than what's posted?
And that, right.
For this, butters are not aware of this at all?
Well, they. Per the ordinance, once the application is received and it's put on the agenda, a butters notices are sent out. So we got this, what, a week or so ago? Two weeks ago? Two weeks? So the butters, I mean, I could have got the butters notices out earlier, but the agenda hadn't closed, so I was finishing up all the other work.
The one that concerns me is the due process thing. Because if they don't know, and we're discussing business that has to do with them, that's.
But we're not making any decisions.
No, I know we're not. But we're discussing it.
It's a workshop.
MMA is very open about transparency.
Understand that. But the way I see it, Gerard, is this workshop is for us to go through a package. So we got the data and the information that would help us to review things and do things in appropriate with our ordinances.
I feel, I feel great about doing that if I was 100% sure that it would be appropriate. That's all. I just wanna make sure that.
I mean, my concern then is why are we waiting till 40 minutes for you to raise that concern?
What do you mean, wait 40 minutes?
Well, we're 40 minutes into the meeting before you said that you had concerns about us discussing.
Well, I didn't realize especially that the butters hadn't been contacted and were discussing this particular, we're discussing an application. Think about it from a perspective of you're a homeowner and an application is being discussed before you even know what's going on. That's why MMA has guidelines on notification. We might have no, put this on the agenda, but it, I could be wrong. But I feel that we should reach out to MMA and ask them if it was appropriate, if we had a workshop before we notified the butters.
Huh?
This way we don't.
Yeah.
So, so that, so that this way we don't, you know, we know whether or not we can do, if we can do this, I'd be happy to do it all the time.
I would too.
I just don't wanna break the law and then have it come back and bite us.
Did you find something?
I'll go through the book or tonight or. I mean, I'm not trying to be, I'm not trying to make the process harder.
Yeah, it's, so it, it does talk about the butters in the book. And it says, the warrant also should give reasonable notice to the public and press as required by the Freedom of Access Act or relevant local ordinance charter provisions or other state law. So.
But that's what you did when you posted it, didn't you? She's going to the other book. Is this our ordinance book?
Yes.
I didn't see. What page are you looking at?
I'm looking at page 95 and 96. So notice to butters in the land you're in, and it says, the planning board shall send by first class mail to all property owners within 500 feet. The lot notice of pending application for the site plan review. Notice shall indicate the time, date, place, and reason for the application. So again, that really was a time for me to get.
No, it says for the site plan review. I see that in the actual meeting.
This isn't a site plan review.
This is not a site plan review.
I would treat this as a pre-application meeting. Applicants are required to schedule a meeting with the planning board prior to a formal submission for review and discuss their plans and gain an understanding of the review procedures, requirements, and standards. During this pre-application meeting, the planning board will determine the appropriate procedural and administrative process for the proposed development. In addition, the planning board may waive specific application requirements when an applicant shows that some requirement is not relevant to the proposed project. So the only that is that this is a workshop and we cannot vote.
Right, there's no voting, no nothing.
That, that I understand. The point is, is, the point is on the state law, can we hold the workshop without, on a project, without.
The agenda was posted. The agenda was posted.
We couldn't, we couldn't review, we couldn't do.
You can't vote on anything, but you can hold a pre-application meeting and review the application.
Without notifying the butters?
According to our ordinance.
Yeah.
Because until...
Yeah, we definitely couldn't vote.
And what page is that supposed to be?
That's page on 95.
What's that, 95?
95. Bottom of the page, pre-application meeting.
Okay. Much rather send everybody to a review, rather than send them right into a meeting. Because I, I think that this is beneficial for the planning board, myself, and the community.
Yeah.
And the applicants.
And the applicants.
Well, the applicant's not here.
But they're gonna be told to get what they need to get.
Right.
They were told to.
They were told to be...
Actually, Mark Bolton called me tonight and said, "Do I need to come in? Do you want me to come in?" I'm like, "It's up to you."
Right.
You're more than welcome to come in.
Oh, yeah, absolutely. So he knew that...
He was aware of the, where the meeting, chose not to come in?
Yeah, he chose not to come in. That's his...
If we kept reading and we read on to C, it says, "Notice to butters, the planning board should send first-class mail to property owners within five..."
But that's for...
That's for the actual meeting review.
Right.
For the plan review.
But we're going over the site plan.
This is a pre-application.
This is a pre-application. It's totally different, Gerard.
All right, I'm just, just trying to be diligent.
I got one more.
Oh, again.
I got, I got one more, one more page.
Okay.
In the MMA book.
MMA book, huh?
Yes. All right.
Okay.
I mean, that's...
I didn't understand that the butters hadn't been...
Oh, again.
That's why I was like shocked, because it's been...
The actual, this application was more than that.
That's why I mentioned it.
Is this gonna be the standard site plan review, or is this gonna be, where's the separate shoreman zoning application?
That's separate.
Okay, so now there's gonna be a separate shoreman zoning?
I don't know. We have to ask her. That's a standard one that does everything except for subdivision. There's no subdivision.
No, no, we have a, we have our own subdivision application.
Right.
But now this will need a new site plan.
All right. You might do it, too.
You saw it, right?
What's that?
Because you saw it, right? If you knew that rule, I'm gonna stop for 40 minutes?
Uh, yeah, what the point was is that I didn't know.
Oh, no, I get it, but you, I didn't...
Do you find some spectrum?
Can you do what the...
I was in a butter that came to the town hall and said, "Is there a development?" He could attest to it. "The development happening?"
So it's a, um, main stream of access.
My name is not to tell. The trees were coming down. The 50-foot muscle was already down. They weren't supposed to come with 50-foot up. So, of course, it, when you...
Well, I get it.
When you've had that, when you've done it in the share, you make sure you don't wanna have to have...
No, I get it. This is my, my first workshop. So, hey, how long have you been on that rule?
So, under, um, the MMA manual general, under freedom of access, the public has a right to be present anytime the board or subcommittee of the board comprising three or more members meets. Even if the meeting is just a workshop or a strategy meeting. Any meeting of a majority of the full board at which the members will discuss official business or vote must be preceded by public notice. The same is true for subcommittees.
But we can't vote.
Right, and, and you're not, you're not going to.
We're not gonna vote.
Yeah, freedom of access itself does not require that a meeting is generally posted. It does not specify the form or amount of notice which must be used to publicize the meeting. Giving notice of regular meetings and special meetings about a week before the meeting is advisable.
Two weeks after.
Yes, it was, it was posted.
It's posted.
Uh, a half ago.
So that's not a two-week posting, that's a single-week posting?
Seven days.
That is, and I thought it had to go on the website.
It's not really required. No, okay. Thank you.
Well, locally, we have, MMA is a different...
That's MMA's book. She's reading out of it.
Oh, we're reading out of MMA's book.
That's MMA's book.
Seven, eight, seven, ten days.
So we, you posted it. It's posted.
Yeah, it was, it was posted on the website.
Yes, okay, thank you.
Okay, so we got some stuff to work, they've got some stuff to work on tonight.
Right.
I, I've got some stuff to work on for the impervious, impervious area.
Right, yes.
Yep.
So there's some more data collecting that's gotta happen, and some things have to be done before we come to our official planning board meeting on the 15th to act upon the application.
Before we do the site plan review.
Yeah, site plan review. Right, yeah, you're right. Okay. Anybody got anything else over this first one? That took us, wow, an hour over that one, which is okay. That's what workshops are for, guys.
Yep.
They really are.
Roger volunteered to help me go down and measure and hold the other end of the tape.
Okay.
Okay.
It's gonna, probably that particular log is probably gonna take them all four hours to do.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. Are we through for discussion? Like she's got it worried. Discussion's all we did. We discussed the site plan, uh, applicant, application, is all we did. For number A. Are we through with number A for now, you guys think? Can we move on to B?
I'm good with it.
Yep.
Okay. Discussion. Here we go again. Discussion. Land use ordinance and other related document, documentation. Our land use and development ordinance, it's got, and also, it's got some issues. It's got some concerns that we've all brought up from time to time.
They're not compatible.
I understand what you're saying.
With our comprehensive plan, and that's supposed to be.
But eventually, have you ever thought about this? Do we need a comprehensive plan?
State board requires it.
Uh, watch what you're saying now. There are some towns that I know of that have done away with their comprehensive plan altogether, and everything's done by ordinances, ordinances.
You gotta get the MMA manual, Alan.
Okay, I'm just, I'm just bringing it up.
We have to take an MMA class.
No, I'm just telling you, I'm bringing it up for discussion.
The state mandated in 1990 that towns come up with a comprehensive plan. They mandated it. Jesse's shaking his head, yes.
They did.
It's a mandate.
A lot of towns have gotten rid of their comprehensive plan, limited, voted their comprehensive plan out.
We never voted to, so we're, we're talking about ordinances, and all of a sudden you're talking about getting rid of...
Well, though you brought up that comprehensive plan, I wasn't gonna talk about the comprehensive plan. I was only gonna talk about, for discussion, our ordinances, and we got issues with it.
Well, let's go for one minute, our bylaws. Read the mission statement of our bylaws. It says, "We are to uphold the Constitution, protect the health and safety of our constituents, and follow out the rules laid in the comprehensive plan." So we are violating our charter and our rules that we take.
How are we?
Look at our bylaws, Alan. Can you get the bylaws, Desiree, for 2019?
No, I'm not asking that, Doug. I'm only asking you about this.
Thank you.
This is the mission statement we are, we are to do.
I'm not gonna spend much more time on this at all. I'm not gonna argue with you.
The mission of the Parson Field Planning Board, the mission statement is to ensure that all residents are able to exercise their constitutional rights without hindrance, within the scope of the statutes and regulations of the town of Parsons Field and the state of Maine, and with reference to the vision laid out in the comprehensive plan.
Enough said. We've skipped, we're going on to the next one then, 'cause I'm not going through no big, long, big drawn-out process with this now, this time.
Well, Mr. Chairman, that's a bylaw. Why are you saying you wanna get rid of the comprehensive plan?
I didn't say that. I said, "What if?" You ever, don't read, don't read words into my language.
We're in the process of having, we just spent, what, 20 grand on...
I don't know. I have no idea.
I, I don't know where this is coming from. It's, it's a little frightening to be honest.
Okay, all right. I was asking...
Another thing I'd like to point out, as far as zoning, do you know what the plantation is?
The what?
Do you know what the plantation is?
That's one of those subdivisions.
Mm-hmm.
Oh, no.
This is to give you an idea of how little you know about the zoning in town. Plantation is resource protection.
No.
No.
Nope.
Plantation's not resource protection. It's resource conservation.
Conservation.
Yeah, it's an east wind. It's resource protection. That's what resource conservation is.
The town of Parsons Field gave the plantation tax.
The state, the state.
To leave it open for...
The state, the federal does.
I, we are not gonna go through any...
My point, Alan, is you don't even know the zoning of the town. You think the plantation is a subdivision. Not, it's 40% of the town.
Okay, that's enough said. Enough said. Let's skip, we're gonna skip that one. I'm not gonna argue with anybody about anything. I don't think we need to argue about it. Uh, nobody wants to talk about their land, and development ordinance will go to item number C, discussion.
I think it's important that we do.
Okay. Well, you, all you wanna do is argue about everything. You're Gerard?
I'm not trying to argue, Alan.
You are. You absolutely are.
Alan, you're talking about why do we need a comprehensive plan? At first, that blows my mind.
Okay.
Because it's law.
Okay.
And, and you've challenged me, you've challenged me on everything.
You challenged me on everything. No, it's, you, don't reverse it. You challenged me on everything I try to do.
I was in the audience.
All right, nope, enough said. We're not discussing anymore.
Mr. Chairman.
We're not...
Point of order.
No, no point of order, not at this time.
I was in the audience, trying to speak.
All right, uh, we're going to item number C, discussion.